Okay, I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, April 13th, 2016 meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. And the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of March 23rd. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions? Anybody has to propose?
I'll move to approve them.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Abstentions?
Don't you just love those minutes? They're just two pages.
Yeah. Well, we don't have any abstentions, so we're -- okay, minutes approved. All right. Yeah, great. All right, the next item is correspondence. And I'd like to start by saying that we received, or at least Ann received, and Michael and I were copied, on a letter from Rebecca Rodd, sent Thursday, April 7th. And it reads, I'll just read it. "Dear Ann and Wendy, After giving it much thought, I've decided to step down from being on the Planning and Zoning Commission. While I so appreciate Mary Lambert suggesting this opportunity to me, and subsequently appointing me, I just find that it's not the best fit for my interests and abilities, and I think there are folks out there that could better serve this important work. I have enjoyed being in the company of such a great group of fellow commissioners, Wendy people I greatly admire, and also deeply appreciate and respect the skillful work of Mike Ray, and you, Ann, and the whole department on all the issues that are presented. With great thanks and best wishes to all, Rebecca Rodd." So, we want to thank her for her service, and we're sorry that she's decided not to continue. And I guess it means there's an opening on planning and zoning, or is there one in the queue?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so if you know anyone who might want to serve, you've been through this process many times over the years, so you know, people come and go. But we're sorry to lose her, but we thank her for her service. And then you had other correspondence, right?
I was probably going to announce it in the open microphone, it's more of a public comment.
Okay.
Just do it then.
Okay. So, is there any correspondence, other correspondence that anybody wants to share, or staff? Okay. Next item, moving along, the Transportation Commission meeting report.
The Transportation Commission met a month ago.
Wow.
And the topic there was a continuation of our discussion of bicycle signage and wayfinding signs for bicycles. The next meeting of the Transportation Commission will be tomorrow, 4:00 to 6:00 in this room. The agenda includes what I suspect is probably the final discussion of bicycle lane finding signage, and also a discussion, I'll read it, Health Services District Parking Plan. I'm not exactly sure what that involves, but Michael, you may have further information on what's there.
Yeah, I think that with Gritman's new building, they're building, you know, the expansion of their campus on Main Street, I think they're contemplating, you know, there's some underutilized parking in that area, and thinking about shifting that over to maybe a university parking zone, where the university, or not university, but Gritman, a hospital parking zone where they would control the parking along the side streets and Main Street, just in a few blocks on South Main Street for Gritman's.
Well, at any rate, that will be a topic of discussion tomorrow afternoon between 4:00 and 6:00.
So you, just to clarify, you mean switching from a current university zone parking to Gritman's parking?
It was hospital zones.
Oh, hospital.
I don't think he meant anything about university. I think it's more just a city.
Oh, just that type of -- I got you. I wasn't following. Yeah, well, the only thing I can think of is Suite Avenue or something.
Is that a common thing to do?
Yeah. Usually in other cities, you know, you'd see if there's a large hospital area where they have, you know, a larger campus, and then you have city streets that go through there, then it's pretty common to have some type of permitting system. It's like downtown where it's three-hour parking. You get a green permit for parking in Jackson Lot. It'd be similar to that, only you'd have, you know, a certain permit, it's like we do on campus. We have some city streets that run on campus, where we've turned enforcement, parking enforcement over to university, and they've implemented like a purple permit for like great parking, fraternity, sorority, then they have their own enforcement. So it'd be some similar concept where, instead of our parking enforcement, and just open to the public city parking, it'd be for hospital employees and then visitors, and so they're coming up with some type of master plan in order to do that.
The new building is in general business, right?
It's actually in central business.
It's in central business, okay. So it does not have a parking requirement?
Doesn't have a parking requirement. I think they're anticipating that the amount of cars that you currently see out there without, you know, prior to the building being constructed, there's always quite a bit parked around that triangular, you know, parcel. And so I think they're contemplating all the additional employees that are going to be housed in that building, as well as the visitors, and, you know, they have the temporary parking lot across the street, and I think they may look at doing something like that in the vicinity.
You would wonder when, at what size a hospital gets to, when they have to start thinking about having a parking part of the structure, or I know, as we worked on it with in our studio in '13, we, you know, we were always dreaming of some underground parking or something, but that's the most expensive kind of parking, and almost impossible to afford. But you do wonder when the university is going to get serious and build a structure too. I mean, since we see them at Boise State, and we see them at Washington State, but we don't see them here, it's a signal that we're, I just don't know when that size, or when does a hospital, of course, it'll depend on whether they're in the middle of the city or not, but gosh, 45 years ago, St. Luke's was tearing things down and building parking structures.
The hospital itself is in general business, isn't it?
It is. Yeah, there's a disconnect there.
The hospital itself has parking requirement.
Yeah.
But the new addition does not?
Does not, yeah.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, I think the dividing line is Seventh Street.
Right.
And so that's when it transitions to general business, but then we still have this remnant central business on that triangular-shaped parcel.
Interesting. Okay, any other thing about transportation? I guess not. We've reached the point in our agenda called "Open Microphone," and this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the commission regarding matters that are not on the agenda, nor currently pending before planning and zoning. If you, we have one visitor, do you plan to participate? Okay, well, we'd like to invite anybody who might be listening. If you have something on your mind you want to come tell us about, this is an opportunity in our meeting that we've set aside for you to come share those thoughts with us. Okay, so now we move on to items.
Yeah, I do have the one.
Oh, you do, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll pass those out. We did, our department received a letter from a local business owner of Jiffy Lube, and he apologizes that he can't be here tonight. He had a conflict, and then we were looking at maybe coming to the, having him come to the second Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and he was going to be out of town during that meeting. So, he had just written a letter and wanted us to take a look at it, wanted me to present it, and I think I sent it out earlier today.
Yes.
So, everybody had a chance to take a look at it, but really, his issue is the type of portable signage that we currently allow, and we went through a revision in about 2009. We had like the sandwich board signs that were only allowed in the central business district, and there was quite a few business owners that were, you know, displaying those outside of central business districts. So at the time, we'd gone through a code amendment to allow like a three-foot by four-foot sandwich board sign, and we developed portable sign standards for those, and essentially they're allowed in pretty much the majority of the commercial zoning districts. Since then, sounds like as, you know, signage has evolved, there's a couple other, or maybe one other different types of signage out there, and it's what the gentleman calls a feather-type sign, swisher sign, and it's the more upright, you know, looks similar to a feather in shape, and you see them, you know, driving through various cities, and we have some locally here, that really aren't covered in our sign code. It's, you know, per our sign code, it would be classified as a sign, it'd be a portable sign, because usually they're, you know, on a portable base, and they're taken out, you know, each day in the morning, and then taken back inside at night. And this particular gentleman has a couple in front of Jiffy Lube, and then also on the car wash right next door, where he has three displayed there as well. You know, he's been displaying those for the last couple of years, and I think we'd received a complaint within the last month, and we'd gone around to all the businesses that have these feather-type signs, and informed them of the current portable sign regulations, which would prohibit those unless there was some type of sandwich board sign. And I think a couple of businesses ended up going towards the sandwich board sign instead of the feather sign. And so, the gist of his letter here is to request that Planning and Zoning Commission take a look at, you know, as this signage definitely evolves, that we look at maybe adding some additional standards and allow these feather signs in addition to the sandwich board signs for businesses within the motor business and general business zones. And so, not sure I need to read through the whole letters, unless you, nobody's read it.
I read it on my cell phone.
Do we have any duration requirements? How long sandwich board signs can be up?
Well, they have to be taken down every night, so it's really just during business hours that they're allowed to be displayed.
But they can do that 365 days a year?
Yeah, yeah, it's just as long as they're taken down at night and put up in the morning, then they can display those, yeah, whenever they want.
What's that size?
Three feet by --
This is 11 feet.
Three feet by four feet is the sandwich board sign.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Is the regulation for that. The size for these feather signs is 11 feet tall, and then it says there's an additional two feet, which encompasses the pole, so about 13 feet in height for those.
I don't quite understand how these things work. I mean, are they like flagpole kind of things, or?
We just have a base, and a pole goes up, and a feather just sits on a pole, and just flaps.
So the pole's always there, or the pole comes down too?
The whole thing.
It's like it's on a little pedestal.
So if you, if you look at the picture, there's, you see the base there at the bottom, and it probably has some type of telescoping thing.
Fits into a sleeve or something.
Yeah. But, so, you know, in the interim, while, you know, if we take a look at this, I think that the option presented to the gentleman at Jiffy Lube was, like, the bonkers signs, they're not really signs, they're just flags, because they don't have any logo or anything like that on them. And so, you know, an option for him would be to, and I think that is what he's done, is just ordered solid colored ones to put out there, and so that, you know, in the interim, if, you know, council or planning and zoning does decide to take a look at it and maybe incorporate that, that's what really people are allowed to do right now, is just display those. They can be the same colors as the business, they just can't display any type of logo on them.
No words, just call.
No words, yeah.
Is this something that we should take up for changes in the code for future meeting?
Yeah, it's up to, I'm just, I just brought it to you at his request, and just wanted some direction about whether or not we should take a look at it.
I'm sure, seems like we'd need to look at this kind of moving thing, you know, there's these other signs, these funky things that have air in them, that look like a
Oh, right. Yeah, like a beach ball floating around.
I really, I'm relatively negative to these things, so I'd really like to look at it carefully. I can imagine having some of these movable signs that go up for 30 days or something on an event, you know, you've got something going on, you're a big sale, blah, blah, blah. But to have them up, year in and year out, 365, sure.
I've seen a lot of faded ones, and that's what I think of when I think of like a highway strip somewhere.
So, it's having, like driving through a laundry, if everybody puts one up on the, on every strip in America, you're looking like you're driving through somebody's, it'd be like Tenement, the Tenement Village in Lower East Side back in 1900.
Well, you know, I think it's, personally, it's probably worth a discussion at some future meeting, and how we, you know, on how we, what the issues are pro and con, you know.
It'd be very interesting to see, again, like we do with everything else, is try and find out what fancier places, larger cities, and what other people have done in terms of looking at them. I don't know, you're probably, we have an important businessman on our commission now that would probably help us understand. You know, as we looked at the reader boards, I thought it was important that we really spent time on those, and looked at them, and tried to understand them, rather than, because it seems like some new thing that is, pops out.
Well, you start to, I mean, I think of the strip as somebody does something, and the next person tries to make whatever they do bigger, and then, there's so much visual noise, you don't see any of it. I mean, that, you know, that can happen, and so, you know, thinking about it carefully.
Yeah.
This isn't as much of a strip as like if it were on the Paul Meyer song.
Well, we haven't seen them out on our little strip that we do, as we've often talked about, we're fairly lucky to have a one-sided strip, and so we're not.
Well, there are some popping up, like at the Renaissance Mall, there's, or has been some.
That's right, Renaissance has a couple, that's true.
And they look good, they look classy.
That's what happens to these signs, you know, I don't know if you remember, quite a few years ago, maybe '35 or '40, remember those funky reader boards came out, you could put letters in them, and they had lights in them, and they were on a little trailer, and you could just move that trailer around, and they were everywhere. And now they're just rusting someplace between here and St. Mary's on the highway. You still see them sitting out there, but no one uses them anymore, because now we have digital things and what have you.
Well, certainly, science, like you said, sign technology changes, and maybe periodically we should be visiting what that technology is, and what, how it might impact our sign ordinance, and, you know.
I agree that it would be an appropriate topic for further discussion to, to look at what the implications would be for the verbiage in the code.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you for that. So I guess now we move on to item 60 off Street Parking Landscaping Standards. And Mike, you have a presentation on the table.
So I know we covered, I think we just skimmed the surface on kind of landscape requirements before, but I had a chance to do some more research into other jurisdictions. I put together this chart, and it's complete, but it's hard to read, so I'll just go through kind of from top to bottom. It's, I think it's good to look at the whole picture, but once you put it on 11 by 17, they kill the font for you, so.
You've got all these middle-aged people staring at you.
I know, yeah, just as you were complaining about Bill's glasses there. So you all need to look at that if you don't want to, we'll just go through kind of one by one.
What about the old age ones?
You're past that.
I have these.
So if you look at the majority of the ordinances, and ours is the same, that we usually have landscaping broken down for parking lots into exterior and interior. The interior is usually the landscape islands that you see with the six-inch curve that surround them. The exterior generally on the perimeter of the parking lot. And so, you know, we've gone through, and there are some similarities, I guess, in categories of these different exterior and interior. You know, they usually have some type of dimensional standard to them, they usually have a certain number of, you know, what's contained within the island, or the buffer, trees, shrubs, vegetated cover. They have kind of a point where the interior islands kick in, they have a, usually standards that you have a certain number of spaces, and a certain number of parking stalls, and then you're required to have one of these interior islands. Usually have dimensions for those iron islands. And so, I had gone through and taken a look at about 10 to 12 other jurisdictions, and, you know, like I mentioned, there are some similarities in these, but a lot of them just do similar to what the other ones do, only in a different way. And so it, yeah.
Oh, I have a question for you, just on this one, in terms of, we have a, is this taken, I'm trying to locate where this point.
I don't know if that's here or not.
Because this one looks to me broader than three feet. It looks like it's four feet, or, and I was looking at Lewiston and Sandpoint, and they have five feet, and we have three feet, and I'm just wondering if you know what the underlying logic is for our three feet.
Well, I don't know that, I don't, no. I mean, it's been in the code for quite some time for the three feet, at least, you know, probably since the 90s. But, yeah, in comparing these, you know, it kind of varies, but there is a similarity that a lot of them are five feet. And I think that, you know, what I was going to suggest at the end of this presentation was, similar to what we've done with the Street Tree Advisory Committee, maybe form some of our own recommendations and, you know, draft ordinance, and then call in some landscape folks, you know, a couple ones that we usually see doing landscaping for larger parking lots and multifamily developments, you know, kind of reform that committee with, replacing a couple members with some members that have specific businesses for landscaping, and maybe are required to construct parking lots as part of their development, and get their input, because, you know, working with the landscapers around town, I know that, you know, they know best what type of tree's going to fit within that area, and whether or not you can even put a tree within a three-foot wide landscape.
Whether there's enough area to gather nutrients and stuff.
So, yeah, and so I think that that'd be a good idea to maybe form that group, and, you know, for a meeting or two, and get their input about what works and what doesn't with our current standards, and let them, you know, take a look at what we're proposing.
There's just a nice landscape job there, so I was wondering, it looked like it's four feet at least.
It looks like it would be difficult to cram that into.
Three feet, yeah.
Were you surprised for us that, like, the threshold for interior landscaping, ours doesn't start till 50 spaces?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is maybe not just addressed to this particular ordinance, and maybe I've just been oblivious. But do we ever say anything about the reasoning behind what's leading to an ordinance? So, to say we picked a three-foot buffer, or we picked the size of islands, or, but is there some, I don't think we ever say, what are the underlying forces driving why we're choosing what we choose in an ordinance?
Yeah, that's why I was asking what the underlying.
Like, why would you pick three feet instead of five feet? And why would you pick islands after 50 spaces instead of, like, what is the purpose of the ordinance to begin with, and all the nuances? And I don't think we ever, do we ever say that? As we lead into it and say, the purpose behind, you know, what we're trying to achieve, and then hit what all the technicalities and.
Yeah, whenever you have an ordinance, and you have the whereas, the recitations in the beginning, those are probably ones you don't read, but you go through.
Well, sometimes I do, but.
Yeah, and that's what, you know, that's really what the background, where that's intended to go, but it's real general, you know, it doesn't get down to the nitty-gritty about why we chose five-foot.
But our complaint talks about transportation and automobiles, and, I mean, we can get a sensibility from the complaint, can't we? It's generic.
But I'm thinking like this, the perfect, in my mind, the idea is, people are driving cars, there's not a whole lot we can do about that, and the cars, number of cars just keep building up, but there's also the need for the cooling effect, and environmental considerations, there's this water quality. So there are all these things that we're trying to take into account on this particular one, and on other ones, we're trying to take other, and I don't think the whereas is always address.
Yeah.
The things we're thinking about as we try to be sensible when we pick.
No.
And choose, and recommend.
And those get lost in the ordinance.
They do.
You know, a lot of times, you'll have an intent statement at the beginning of each section, so each zoning code for, or each different zoning district, for instance, would have an intent statement. Well, a lot, if you, you know, look through the different portions of code, a lot of these have an intent statement at the beginning, you know, reduction, noise, glare, sun, air pollution, through introduction of landscaping.
Okay.
You know, and they're all pretty broad, but they, you know, usually three, four sentences about the benefits of landscaping and.
But I think it would be really good for us to, at least, even if we don't think they have to be written down in the ordinance at every point, if we sort of state those, because what, for instance, we're a tree city, we get awards as a tree city. I'm just chatting with a young man who came here to work at the hospital, last night we were at the hospital, and he was asking me about, were there trees, were there trees here, when the man first came? And, you know, I had to sort of help him understand that, duh, no, other than a few little trees along the crick, we didn't have trees in the Palouse. And as we become a tree city, when you look back at the great pictures of Moscow in 1920, you could hardly, you could look across town and not see a tree. Now, it looks like a forest. And I think we've set that image for ourselves. There's one of those broader images that we could say, we like Fort Russell, or whatever, because of the tree cover. And so, we don't, what are we going to say? Well, we don't care about parking lots, we think, we should have a tree cover in Fort Russell, but along the strip, you know, we don't have to worry about it. I don't think we think that.
Well, then also, there are all the emerging environmental issues that weren't there before, or weren't thought about in terms of stormwater retention on site with bioswells and permeable pavements and permeable surfaces, and, you know, that the parking lot needs to have some mitigation on site, and that's not really very clear right now in our ordinance. And that thinking has really progressed in the last 10 years, just from teaching with architecture students, with landscape architecture students, and seeing 10 years ago what they were learning, and, you know, that was the first time I heard of a bioswale, you know, and they were kind of at the head of the curve. Now it's expected most places. So, I think that we, there's some need for updating in that vein as well, you know, so.
I think it's a really good question, Deb. I think we need to remind ourselves, sometimes, some of us at least have been here such a long time that we act like we don't ever need to remind ourselves, and I think we do.
Well, I'm just thinking too, if, say you're a developer, it's not, it's nice to know, what's the reason for the kind of rules that I'm expected to comply with? They might sway me if I thought, oh, well, I hadn't even thought about that, or, sure, I see why you're asking for that, instead of, it could look real arbitrary, well, why in the world did you pick that? And here's the problem that it will cause for me, and maybe, maybe easier for people to have the give and take, and say, yeah, I can see why I need to do that. need to do that. No, I think that's a fair point. So we didn't let you get past the exterior thing?
Yeah. Well, I want to say that, well, you know, I mean, we, in our current standards, if you flip to page 10 there, that the first ordinance, our current ordinance that's highlighted in yellow, that's why we have the purpose statement there that talks about why we have these landscape requirements within the code.
There they are, right there.
That's what I was thinking. Usually everything is...
All in yellow.
But it doesn't talk about site water mitigation, I don't think.
Yeah, you know, I mean, obviously this is written 20 years ago.
Right, right, right.
So we would need to, you know, update that statement to, you know, start saying some things, noise mitigation, pollution mitigation, you know, things of that nature. So we can certainly do that as part of this.
And shade?
Well, and shade, even as we've, as we've become more and more critical about what we're going to, where water for the future is going to come from, we see, if you think of off-street landscaping, take East City Mall, there, they went out and got rid of every green thing almost and put rocks in. And so it reminded you of Phoenix, if you have been to Phoenix in recent decades.
Mad enough for me to.
And, you know, and now with different kinds of plants as well. So I do think we have to, because I think it's one of our biggest issues is trying to imagine what our grandchildren are going to be doing for water. So whether, how that impacts what we say about beautifying, what we want is trees that have a taproot that goes down and tries to find some water down there.
Well, and that the more you take out green and growing things, the drier things become.
And the hotter they...
And the hotter they become. So it's almost, you can think you're not using as much water to water the things that were there, but then that can of itself create a drier environment, so it's not a straightforward...
No, no.
So there's no straightforward solution?
Is there anybody that does any type of watering of the vegetation without doing a sprinkler system? You know, with capturing rainwater for these particular islands?
Not that I know of in larger parking lots. I know that locally residential, you know, there's a lot of residential people that catch them out of their storm or out of their rain gutters and they use that. And the plumbing code does allow for gray water systems. It's just that usually when you look at that, it involves some type of underground tank, which is really costly to do.
I guess I wasn't even thinking underground, I was thinking above ground. And then it changes the concept about what these islands could look like because they should then reflect the fact that we need to have them be watered by themselves without having to dip into city water or gray water. I guess I was just thinking that make, you know, we always talk about doing the zero-scape stuff, but why, if we want foliage that has, you know, more leaves and drinks more water, maybe we need to look at how we capture the water and keep it in that island. Am I kind of...
Right.
So when we lived overseas, you know, they had all the Tanakas, you know, you have all the things that are, everybody captures water and stores it someplace. So that particular area would capture its own water and then you would put in vegetation with how much water that could be captured for that season, you know, so there'd be some...
Yeah, and that's, you know, I think that the direction we were going to go with this was that, you know, maybe the tree commission has the, you know, specifications guide for the certain trees that are planting around town. And they're working on that right now of kind of narrowing that down for street trees to have maybe 10 examples in certain circumstances, like this is the type of tree if you're under a power pole type thing or power lines. And, you know, and looking through these other jurisdictions, they do something similar to that where they have this agricultural specifications guide from the urban forestry department. And then a lot of times they'll specify, you know, that's why these interior landscape islands, they'll specify that it's a certain width, six feet wide, and a certain depth in order to, you know, as shown within the specifications guide, in order to, you know, they have researched that and in order to ensure that the, you know, that type of tree...
So you don't even know what trees, like Main Street, that they're just, they are not adequately competent for...
Yeah, so if you have a certain type of tree and you have a certain depth of your planter and a certain width, then, you know, showing that that will survive. And it's usually you need to water it for maybe the first couple of years until it's established. And then after that, I think they're pretty maintenance free unless you go through like a drought, drought type condition. Okay, so, you know, starting off with exterior landscape dimensions, going through these, right now we have that three foot wide buffer that's only required when it's adjacent to the right of way. So if you have a parking lot next to a street, you're required to put a three foot wide landscape buffer in. If it's adjacent to other commercial developments, you're not required to put a three foot buffer in. It's just, if it's adjacent to residential land. So, you know, maybe that's something to think about as well is, you know, whether or not, you know, cross access between different parcels is a good thing, but maybe, you know, requiring a three foot buffer between different commercial parking lots would be, you know, a way to introduce some more landscaping. Boise, they just made their landscape dimension on the exterior, just the equivalent of the setbacks, which is, you know, there's a couple in here I think that do that. It's just a little odd because usually your setbacks are pretty large, you know, depending upon where it's at. Maybe it's 10 feet on one side, five feet on the other. Or a lot of commercial zones don't have any setbacks, so, and then you have this disparity between why you should have a, you know, just because you're in a different zone, you have a different landscape buffer and maybe it's general business and motor business where they're pretty similar. And so, you know, that, I think that a lot of these parking lot standards should be treated equally, no matter where, you know, where they're located. Caldwell just said that you needed to have one, but didn't specify a width. Cortlande, same thing. Lewiston, they had, they, theirs varied. So adjacent to the right of way, it was required to be five feet. So adjacent to a street, and then if you had a parking lot less than 10,000 square feet in size, you only needed to do a two foot perimeter landscape buffer. And if it was greater than 10,000, that increased to five foot. Meridian was five. Missoula, they didn't specify. Nambla was equivalent to the setbacks, just like Boise was. Pullman's five, Sandpoint's five, Twin Falls, another one that didn't specify. As far as what was contained within those landscape islands or those landscape buffers, right now we have the requirement that you have two feet, two foot tall shrubs every six feet on center, so centered within, so about a foot and a half in, centered within that three foot buffer. And then you also install a seven foot tall tree every 10 parking stalls. And so I think we had talked about before moving to caliper size on the trees.
Are those sizes at their maturity or at the time of planting?
It's in planting for, for, at least for the, at least for the tree is. The shrubs, they require to be two feet tall, but, you know, what I've noticed with the challenge in that is you don't get many shrubs that are two feet tall from the nursery. You know, they're usually maybe one max. And so, you know, this would be something that'd be good to talk to our local landscapers about is the challenges they run into with that. We also see quite a bit of the native grass being used, which is, you know, I mean, it's attractive, but really the intent of this is, you know, buffering, you know, visual buffer requirement and whether or not the native grass, you know, if it grows, depends on, I guess, how widespread it grows. But usually when it's first planted, it looks like maybe 10 hairs coming up at about six inches long.
Well, I was saying about on the shrubs, even if you've got a two foot tall shrub at the time you're planting, that doesn't tell you a thing about what it would be at maturity and in its proper shape.
Yeah.
Well, it seems like every shrub I plant thinks it's in heaven and they end up 10 feet tall, 10 feet across and...
Yeah.
And I'm not really pampering them. So it seems to me that at the time of planting, that's, that's not the point at which you call out specifications. It'd be at maturity, it will fill this space appropriately.
Yeah, and a lot of the language in the different codes speaks to, you know, four feet tall when it reaches maturity.
Yeah, that makes more sense to me.
And language like that, so... Boise just says that it's one tree per 40 lineal feet. Caldwell doesn't specify what is contained within that area. One tree per 300 feet for Cortlande and required, a required landscape area. Lewiston, just one, one and a half inch caliper shade tree. And usually the trees that are required to be planted are all mainly one and a half inch calipers, so that's pretty common. Five shrubs every 36 feet. So Lewiston comes in at one of the more, one of the jurisdictions that just requires a little bit more landscaping. Meridian's one tree per 35 lineal feet and also shrubs, lawn or other vegetative ground cover. And these statements, I think we have one of those in our code that, I think under sign, under our sign code, you can get a larger sign if you have landscaping around the base. But I, we find that those general statements are really hard to enforce because it's really just our discretion about how many shrubs or, you know, the, how many patches of sod or other vegetative cover, you know, it's usually, what's the minimum I can do to get, you know, to have you approve this type of thing? And so it's always good to maybe put a little bit more detail in, at least the number of shrubs. I think ground cover, obviously with lawn or rock or, you know, it's, as long as they have one of those, it's pretty much up to the owner. Missoula, that's a real general, any combination of berms, planting walls or fences that result in a continuous buffer to a height of 36 inches above parking lot grade along the length of the parking area frontage. So they give you a lot of options, but stipulate that you have to have at least 36 inches above the grade. And that's another thing that's, you know, missing from our code right now in some of those urban settings where you don't have a whole lot of room is the ability to maybe put a, you know, a wall in combination with shrubs there as well. Especially in, adjacent to residential and you have issues with parking lots and headlights shining and adjacent properties is, you know, that is a nuisance issue a lot of the time with that.
Michael, I'm, I just wanted to stop for a second and ask a follow-up question. We're, we're the only people, we're the only commission that's worried about this? In other words, the tree commission, okay, what do they do? Do we, I'm beginning to ask myself two things. One, can I visualize this well enough, sitting here at the table? Is this one of those topics where we would like to take a little hour and a half tour around town to three or four sites that are critical, that have examples that we could look at and say, well, we kind of like this, or hey, we don't like this at all and why? And then the other question is, who's our tree expert here that should be sitting at the table talking to us about our tree guy, Tom, maybe?
Or Dave Brock?
Or whoever, huh?
Dave Brock.
Yeah, I don't know who, I'm just, I'm just having a little trouble trying to act like I know what I'm doing here. And who would we like to get to engage us in this discussion? I applaud looking at what other people are doing, but this one tree per 35 feet is starting to get away from me a little bit. I can't quite...
So it's like one every almost four parking spaces, right? Or, no, it's like five, no, more than that?
Yeah, so, I don't know. I'm just, I'm kind of, I realize it's getting in the way of just going chop, chop, chop down the way. But I keep, as I, as I, I keep thinking, okay, let's see, what happened at East City Mall? What happened on campus? What happens over at the other mall? What do those look like? And I'm trying to be a little smarter and I don't feel smart, smarter. And so I was just trying to get back to whether, I realize, I know on campus they do have a landscaping guy. We have a, our tree commission would relate to these things too, but then these are also bushes and whatever the kinds of things we want to suggest. And I'm, I don't know, I'm feeling a little bit, just, I think I'd be real comfortable talking about this, but I'm struggling with it a little bit.
I think, I think we all are. I mean, I opened up with the question, what's the underlying logic of three feet or five feet, you know, for one of the boundaries? And because we were looking at a picture that was really nice and it was certainly more than what we require. And so I don't, you know, what would be the best strategy, looking at examples of places that we think are successful? And, or looking at places in town that are successful? I, you know, I don't know. What do you think?
I don't know when the, you know, if you go to the university back 30 years, back in 80 when the town was deciding to plant trees, we decided to do that too. And we may have overdone it a little bit, I don't know, but I know we planted hundreds and hundreds of trees since that time. And it would be useful to go and look at those parking lots and imagine and get a feeling of what they're...
A lot of them have juniper and cotonyaster and, you know, shrubs.
But we planted rows of trees around parking lots on a considerable amount, which would give us a, an insight into this. I'm, I'm touched by Deb's question. And, and part of the reason is I'm so, because my, I have a big yard on a prominent corner in a town where we're not supposed to be watering and I'm, I've been conflicted now for years about what I'm supposed to be doing and how much, you know, am I supposed to cut down all my trees and get rid of all my grass because, why? And so I've been worried about it.
Can we think too maybe about how the city maintains those areas? You know, maybe it's worth talking to the maintenance people about how often the shrubs are cut and they have a feel for working with the foliage that's out there. Wouldn't they be beneficial to get information from too?
And what have we done even in our own parking? We don't have many parking lots, the one on Jackson being just about the only one, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the one we recently had redone. And so, you know, we could go out there and take a look at that. I know that Hodgins Associates have done that design, but you needed to break it up with three foot, you know, bays going down in between the two aisles. And they put some type of stormwater swale in there that was tiered. And I know they had some plantings. And I think last time I was over there, a lot of those had died, but I can't tell you for sure. But, you know, that, that would probably be a good one to take a look at. But, you know, what I had envisioned here was that, you know, I did all this research. I really just wanted to go through just to give you an idea of the different variations of how people address it. And I think the next thing, because it was hard for me to wrap my mind around it, was to do some diagrams. was to do some diagrams, you know, from these different jurisdictions about, well, what does that look like? When you apply, when you apply the standards.
I'm more comfortable because I'm a graphic person. I would love some drawings to go with this, there's no doubt about it. But I think as well, I'd just like to throw out in case anybody else is willing or interested, I would really love to, and to get a couple of our people in the city who deal with this, and then take that a couple hours at some point and really go see what we're asking people to, how could we improve what we're doing?
Yep. Well, and as logical as each town, I'm sure thinks that they have been in their choices, we all have unique circumstances. We have our aquifer, which Lewiston isn't constrained by that, Cortalane isn't constrained by. The differences in our environment are fairly significant in our water resources and number of people that we actually are trying to accommodate. I would rather go look, I would rather take time off work and go look and think about what looks promising, what doesn't. And the other thing is, when we set the standards and someone complies with them, and they've done the plantings that they're supposed to do and blah, blah, blah. If those things don't thrive, do we really, as a municipality, do we go see the owner and say, you know, we realized you planted the trees that you were supposed to plant, the spacing that you were supposed to plant them in, and two years down the road, they're all dead and you're going to have to do it again? I mean, do we enforce, there's no teeth if you just say, do it, and then, and then we don't follow up on it? So what do we do when the, someone doesn't care for them properly and they die and it defeats the purpose? Do we?
Well, we have a statement in here that says it's the ongoing responsibility of the developer, the property owner, for those.
But do we follow up on that? Do we do that?
Yeah, yeah.
We do, okay.
We had recently gone around to a lot of the multifamily developments that got built about ten years ago and gone through and taken an inventory. Becky did, went around, took an inventory of the original landscape plan and all the, a lot of them were still there, but, you know, in most cases, they only had to replace maybe a couple of trees and some shrubs. But yeah, we actually required them to go around and do that.
That's a really.
So, you know, what I envisioned was to just, you know, let you look at the kind of wide variation of requirements. And like, you know, like you said, everybody thinks that, I think that they have something that's scientific and I think their, you know, their own requirements make sense. I mean, some of them get really detailed so that, you know, you have to have a certain number of trees in order to achieve fifty percent coverage on the entire parking lot and maturity. Well, I think the issue for us is, we don't have landscape architects doing every plan that we see. It's very rare unless we have a really large project that you'll have a landscape architect doing the plans. So how do we verify that you're going to achieve fifty percent coverage? And it just becomes, you know, really just a challenge for us in order to be able to enforce a requirement like that. And so, and then others have formulas. You know, they'll have a formula about understory trees and canopy trees, and they have to have a certain, they have to be a certain distance apart, or else they're going to crowd the other one. And they actually have a formula, and you've got to do a calculation there in order to figure out how far you need to set your tree and all of that. I think that it'd be nice to have something that would take that into consideration, but not have a formula. You know, if you have some, maybe a distance requirement for trees or understory trees next to canopy trees, you know, things of that nature. But I think that, you know, from here, it's going to be a good idea for everybody to see, visually see what it looks like, what the requirements look like in a diagram or illustration. So that was our next step. We're going to put this in maybe SketchUp or one of those programs and let you, let you look at.
That would certainly be helpful, Michael.
Let you look at what it looks like. And I think that at the same time, you know, we've got a couple of public hearings next meeting, so I don't know if we'll have time for it, but maybe slated for the meeting after that. We have some diagrams, and then we also invite maybe the chair, a couple of members of the tree commission to get their input on some, on that.
That sounds good.
Does that sound like?
Yeah, that sounds great.
And then we could also maybe start the meeting an hour early and just first hour, walk around to some of the local parking lots, maybe six o'clock. And, you know, we always notice it for a meeting and just special meeting from six to seven, and then we can adjourn here at the end.
So you're talking about in a month?
Yeah, not next meeting, but maybe a first meeting in May.
And I like the idea of thinking, I'm okay with looking at the literature of this, but as we get into planting, what Pullman, we share the same aquifer. It's absolutely true that, you know, Boise and Cortalane are just sitting on top of a puddle of water. They've got water running through it, and they're, it's a different thing. You know, I just, I've said this before, but I grew up in Boise, when if you dug a ten-foot hole, you, there was water, ten feet below. Hello, we're at three hundred feet for water. There's a lot of difference between that. And I don't know how that impacts what we want to tell. And yet, we're, we have one of the most beautiful towns in Idaho in terms of its tree cover. We've done really well, given the issues that we face. So I don't want to immediately just paint, well, it's a dark, it's a dark thing. But I think that you would think maybe that Boise and Lewiston would be different. When I go to Lewiston, I keep seeing all that water out there, just outside the edge of town, and all those boats going by, and I don't see any boats going by here.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, from personal experience, I don't think trees present the same kind of problems that shrubs and shallower.
Right.
Because I can say that, you know, we have acreage out of town. We used to have a farm out there, it was all wheat fields, put it in CRP, got planted seedlings this big, thousands of them, and they're thirty feet high, you know? I mean, stuff grows. It's, trees are not a problem. I've, you know, they might need a little nurturing the first year or two if they especially are there for, next to a hot parking lot. But I think the real problem is the other types of plant materials that.
Trees are a problem only if they're confined.
Right, if they don't have room for root. And so that you have to select the trees that fit within the median width. And that takes, I think, the knowledge of a landscape architect, or at least a nursery person or something, you know?
So we need to make sure that the design of planting arrangements will allow a tree to survive on rainwater.
Yeah.
But the access to irrigation is definitely a problem for some of the shallower ridged.
Right, right, for some of the shrubs. But then there's, you know, drought tolerant shrubs. It doesn't have to be piles of rocks, is I guess where I'm going, yeah? Which I think are down the road causing more problems than they're solving in the short run, because they're just magnifying the urban heat island effect.
The nice thing is so many native shrubs are being bred for a little more beauty along with their hardiness. So that's, I think that's encouraging.
Yeah, you see the displays of zero scape, you know, like the water department and City Hall's about to have one from Nicole Baker. And she's really knowledgeable in that. She'll help private, you know, business owners. Like Rose Arse is having an issue right now where they're wanting to replace a portion of their sign, but the sign's too big and needs some landscaping around the base in order to get an increase. And so, you know, their concern was, they're all right with doing the landscaping, it's just keeping it alive, because there's no water, there's no water lines out there. And so she has said that it's really, you know, the first couple of years, there'll probably have to be somebody going out there and watering it. But after it gets established, and she said it's only extreme drought conditions where somebody will have to go out there and put a little water to it. But, you know, so she's working on a zero scape design with drought resistant, you know, plants out there. And she'll go the extra mile to help, help people like that put together some type of zero scape plan when they have those issues, so.
That's why I was talking about some sort of watering system that could be, and it could be something you take apart. You know, so it, for three years, it could capture, and then there could be a way that's watered, and then it could be taken down, you know? I just, because usually people remember for the first six months or so, and then that goes by the wayside. So trying to put some infrastructure in place that'll naturally take care of it if it needs to be there for three to five years until things are established.
I'd like to at least make a proposal that we follow what you said, Mike. In the next meeting, when we don't have hearings.
Right, in four weeks.
We have an opportunity to meet an hour, hour and a half early and pick maybe three places or three.
Successful examples, I would argue.
Try to test, just, we don't have to try and do everything all in one hour, but to say, okay, here's four points that the ordinance is talking about, and here's an example. Here's what we should look at, spacing of tree, size of shrub, or it's what it appears like. I think it'd be really valuable for us to do that, to people.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So if, I don't know if we need a motion or anything, but maybe we're just doing.
I would ask that you make it the second meeting of May, because I will be gone, and I'm really interested in this. I'm going to be gone the first meeting of May.
I definitely support the idea.
And I, that's my birthday, and I may not be here, because we're going on a little backpacking trip, I believe. So that one, I'll arm wrestle you. No, no, it's okay, if Mike tells me where they are, I'll go look down.
Well, is it possible for us to just have a alternative day to take an hour and a half to do and not be part of our meeting, just a pick a time? Could?
Sure.
Technically, we end up with certain legal problems with a.
Meeting?
A meeting, a quorum present when it's not an announced meeting.
But if it's not really a meeting, it's a tour.
What if we just named the places and we go on our own? We have a list of where to go, and whenever we've got the time, we can go look at those places.
Yeah, we could do that. You know, I mean, it wouldn't be a big deal. If it's a special meeting, we could just notice it as a public meeting and everybody could show up. I think if you run into legal issues, if you have a quorum, like a, you know, a quorum of a commission at a certain place at a certain time, that maybe.
Well, if we don't call an official meeting, I mean, after all, legislators take trips around the state and go look at stuff.
Well, that's the thing, is it'd just be easy, all we just put together an agenda, the time, and post it, and we're covered, so. So yeah, that's doable. What, is that what you prefer, or?
Yeah.
And I'd be, I'd be willing to meet on any other alternative.
We could do an alternate Wednesday, maybe, when we're not normally meeting, or?
My schedule is pretty open.
Okay, well, we'll just, Ann and I will send out an email trying to maybe narrow down a date.
I think with a few drawings and a tour, I think we'd be really more ready to say, oh, like, yeah, that, I know what we're talking about.
See, we don't really know what's working and what's not out there, because no one's told us what's working. And we know it's very aesthetically, that's pretty much all that we'll be looking at, isn't it? Is the aesthetics of it, and seeing what we like, what we don't like. We don't know what's working, how big the parking lot is.
Well, who would tell us what's working?
Well, when we formed that committee and talked to the landscapers that are actually.
And, you know, I mean, one of the first issues that comes up is this business of how large does a parking lot need to be before we want to talk about it?
Yeah.
And I noticed that Pullman says twenty or more spaces, and we say fifty, and I'm somewhat impressed by Pullman.
I think that's good, I think this is good. I think if we go by this and go look and see what we like, and compare it to what other cities have done, and then go by our aesthetic, what we like. I mean, obviously, like Cortalane and Lewiston, they got plenty of water, but I think if we just go for the shade, fifty percent or whatever around the parking lots, that's kind of our goal, isn't it? Is get the parking lot shade and get the water retention, and that's pretty much our goal, isn't it?
I think so, I think that's what. So we need a little cheat sheet with six of those, what are we trying to do here?
Yeah.
You know, and we usually.
Maybe we can't do the whole spectrum. We picked a couple of these items for our first little tour or meeting outside of a meeting, and then do a few more. Might take us a while, might take us longer than what your timeline is or what you're thinking you want your timeline to be, but.
I'm just going on like Florida, I go to Florida a lot, and down there, obviously, they're getting out of the sun, and they're getting out of the heat. And like Walmart parking lot is, it's beautiful. I mean, you park under trees and the sun, and it's just, I don't even think they even have bushes. They just have the trees that are, that are, you know, shading the parking lot.
I know in, you know, California, that it's totally related to the prosperity of the businesses, because without those trees, people don't want to park their car in the hot sun, and so they don't go shopping. And yet, if there's shaded parking lots, they're more likely to go shopping. I mean, seriously, so.
Yeah, exactly.
There's a, yeah.
At the same time, it conserves water, it keeps the heat, I mean, from bouncing off.
So we could, maybe you pick the key issues, and I mean, how are you going to find examples, or?
Well, I think that we're going to do those illustrations based upon their requirements, I think. You know, part of this was to have you look at the different ways everybody does it. So, you know, like, for instance, we were talking about before that for maybe interior islands, you do maybe a ten percent. So instead of, you know, you have a certain island here, you do ten percent of the parking area needs to be, needs to have landscape islands. And a lot of these jurisdictions do that. So, you know, for instance, Cortalane, they have requirements, number of spaces requires a certain percentage. Lewiston has the same requirements. So they have all the, you know, ten percent vehicle use area, so Missoula, NAMFA, if you look down there for the percentage of internal parking lot landscaping required. Missoula's ten percent of vehicle use areas, NAMFA's five percent of vehicle use areas. Well, it, you know, on the surface, it all looks similar, but some of them calculate those differently. So some of them just use the parking stalls themselves. So for instance, Lewiston, I believe, just uses the stalls as the calculation for the percentage. Other jurisdictions use the entire area, so they use the drive, the travel lanes, the parking stalls, and it's all, the entire impervious area.
Yeah, that's a big difference.
And so it's hard to compare, you know, apples to apples here when they're, it looks, on the surface, it looks like they're similar, but yet you look at the, you know, how they word things and how they calculate things, and they're all different. So, you know, it, you start to go through this, and then you start to think of all the different idiosyncrasies that each one have in order, for their calculations, and it gets really hard to visualize what it is, so.
The final product could look drastically different.
It could, so I, you know, so I think it's, it'd be good to try to visualize, do some illustrations about what it is they look like.
Does that program take it from a top-down view and then rotate it so you can see what it would look like?
Yeah, we, SketchUp would do that, it's pretty easy to do. So we can, we can do that, some examples of each one. You know, for instance, some of them just have percentages, and they take into consideration the exterior landscaping. Most of them don't, but, you know, that's going to skew the percentages if you take into consideration the external landscape buffers as well. So it really just varies. So it, it really just varies. And it's, that's why I have all these categories, how the percentage was calculated, you know, gross paved area, total vehicular surface area. One includes drive aisles, driveways, drive-through lanes, so it, so it really just varies. Entire parking lot area, gross paved areas, so.
So a lot of these categories are, are better served by doing the drawings rather than trying.
It is, yeah.
Rather than trying to find examples that probably don't exist or that are hard to find. So I don't know if that's where we want to start instead, it might be easier.
Well, yeah, I was planning on.
So what would you do, take something that was an identical area from outer, outer dimensions? And then say, if it were this city, this size parking lot would look like this if we meet the standards and if it were the other city, it would look.
Yeah, that's what we'll probably do is take, you know, a moderately sized parking lot, just so all their standards usually kick in, maybe 15 plus.
And then you just say, this is what it'd look like in NAMPA, this is what it'd look like in Twin Falls.
It's, it's pretty easy to do with that program, so we could do that and do some examples and then.
Would that be adequate for people? Cause that might be simple, more simple to choreograph than going on a tour.
Well, I think we can do both.
Okay, okay, that'd be great, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, instead of beating you down with this presentation, you could maybe go and take a look at, look at these things. And then we could come back and have the visual images, illustrations, and then also go on the tour and invite the tree commission.
That would be good, yeah. So what are the rules when you combine commissions? Is that?
I think we could, as just a visitor, so.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah, yeah.
Not a quorum of our commission.
But if you're meeting in a time that the commission doesn't normally, I guess you're not, I, I need to know the rules on that better, but.
Yeah, I would just maybe invite them to come to our regular meeting. So the same, maybe same meeting that we look at the illustrations, we could have them here to talk about, well, that tree is, wouldn't work that close to, or that, you know, landscape. Buffer is too narrow for that tree to, type of tree to survive type of thing and they could give us some direction on that. So I think that'd be good, you know, if we went through that, did the site visit, you, with their help, maybe came upon what our recommendation is. And then sent that off to the, you know, our committee with a couple landscape, you know, contractors in town and got their thoughts. Because, you know, just working with them, you know, a lot of times you'll get that, well, that, that's not gonna work.
Right.
So we've gotten that a lot, so what better?
Right, might as well use the resources or knowledge.
What better venue to get their input as we're creating the rules or changing the rules, so.
Yeah, absolutely. So what, did you wanna go through, are you just gonna kinda let us look at these?
What's up to you, I can, we can go through this really quick or you can go home and just kinda digest it, take a look at it and we can just kinda proceed, or?
It would have more meaning for me if they translated to an equivalent sized parking lot and what would they look like? Then the language starts to make more sense than just to read the language without the visual.
Yeah, yeah.
To me, that, we could sit here for the next three hours and read through every one of these and that doesn't really necessarily translate in my, in my mind.
Maybe we'll wait for your illustrations.
And that's why I broken it down into different categories, instead of just looking at them all independently, you know, you want to be able to see the.
Comparisons, yeah.
Comparisons, but, you know, when you break them down in the different kind of categories here, you can see that there are some similarities. But everybody just does things a little bit different and all the different categories affect one another. So it's like a moving, it gives you a headache, it's a moving target, when you start to think you understand and what.
Congratulations for being able to put this together.
I was wondering if there was a clarification between the terminology between exterior landscaping dimension and interior landscaping, so.
Perimeter versus the area.
So this is, these would be interior islands, so you'd have like the island here. And a lot of the language, they'll talk about what the dimension is and what the length is, and they talk about rows. So if you have, you know, one row adjacent, and what they mean is the, the rows of stalls. So they'll have, maybe say, you know, you need an island that's nine feet wide by 20 feet long and you need one, one tree per row. If you're adjacent to a double row, you need two trees, so that's what that means, these are double rows because there's a row here and a row there. And then the way, the way our current code reads is that once you get hit 50 and you start dividing these up into bays. What they're calling bays are the bays of stalls. And they require this division where it's a three-foot buffer right here, so you can't pass through. Almost all the other jurisdictions go towards this model here. And it's just, you know, this one becomes really problematic with snow removal.
Exactly.
You know, you can't, it's, it's less efficient because, well, what if you just want to pull forward and pull out here? You know, it just becomes problematic with our, with our areas when you do this model. So that'll be, you know, that's one thing that we'll, we'll want to try to get rid of. And that's why we were looking at maybe going towards the percentage, giving some flexibility, depending upon the site. You know, if you have 10% that you need a landscape island, well, maybe you have some site constraints and you can, you know, do a couple of these plant, uh, planter islands on the ends. You can achieve it that way, you don't have to, you know, constrain, it's, it's ordered to achieve the landscaping that we want in the islands, but give some flexibility. So it just doesn't, you know, pigeonhole you into a certain design which our current standards do.
And are you just talking about, I thought at one point you talked about spaces, you know, space dimensions for the parking spaces? And we looked at compact versus regular, and so is that gonna be considered in this too?
Yeah, we had kinda gone over that in the beginning and we're just incrementally moving along. We had joint use parking last time, so we're just kinda incrementally going through the, because there's a lot of aspects to it, so. Yeah, well, we'll, you know, that, kinda introduced that, gave some examples. We weren't all that different from other jurisdictions, they were pretty similar. But yeah, we'll, we'll come back and revisit that after we kinda, you know.
So if the landscaping requirements are based on number of spaces and you have compact car spaces.
You penalize yourself.
Does that, does that mean you have to put in more landscaping?
Well, perhaps you have, if you have, then you have to put in a compact car factor or something.
Well, you know, since we had that presentation that Mike did, you know, I've been watching and looking at all the parking spaces and all, and then our area has so many pickup trucks. And people park anywhere here, so people do park in compact spaces that are not compact, so it's a consideration for our parking. And then if you notice when people are, are parking in the, the spaces and then they're trying to use the back of their vehicle, if they get out, they're actually in the roadway, they're in the right of way. And so the length of the space makes a difference too. So anyway, I started to look around at all that stuff too because those make a difference.
Yeah, I think it's, you're right that in a world like ours where pickups are a serious part of our life. Then the number of compact spaces should really, I don't, they, they really don't work so well. I, I don't seem to notice it a lot of places. The place where I notice it the most is when you go to the theater over in Pullman and they have rows of compact and. There's a big pickup setting there.
I notice it every time I go to a more urban dense area where land, where real estate is so expensive, they just make them smaller. And so, yeah, when you get open your door, you gotta kinda shimmy out the side or getting into parking garages.
The backside of the 1912 Center.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and because that, they were limited, isn't it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Is there another component besides this, is, or is this, is it the parking spaces and then it is the landscaping or is there another thing? That you're gonna add to this after we gather understanding about this before we look at the whole thing?
Well, that's why I had given you the whole ordinance for the, the parking, just to go through and take a look. I mean, we've talked about the joint use already, I think we've got a direction on that. A lot of it's just clarifying, we, we use terms that, you know, terms that replace one another. So we, you know, for instance, we have parking areas, we have parking lots. And so we, we interchange those two terms throughout the ordinance and we just need to clean a lot of this up. So a lot of it's doing that, a lot of it's maybe easing up some of the restrictions, like for instance, the joint use. Why that needs to go to a public hearing and a community use permit. You know, it's looking at some of those and seeing how many things we can maybe add some standards and shift those over to administrative. So we don't have to, you know, people don't have to go through a, a cost of a, an application in a public hearing when you get the outcome that you want because you've got standards already in the code. So, you know, a lot of it's, it's that, but that, you know, the majority of the section is, like you said, the landscaping, the, you know, the parking lot standards. For dimensional standards for the stalls and the travel lanes and everything. And then the bigger part are gonna be the, the number of spaces required for each use. So our use table that's in the middle, but that'll need to coincide with our, our zoning use table that we're, we're working on. Shifting all of our uses on each zone to one table, unified table where you can go and look across all the different zones and go there. So that coincides with that because we'll have to, if you look at the current table, it, it's pretty minimal as far as the number of uses that are in there. So a lot of times we're tasked with trying to find a comparable use that we can apply to standard. So when we get to that point where we have our, our use table of all the different uses that are allowed in the zoning code. Then we can start plugging those into categories in the parking table. So that's why we're not addressing that right now, that'll come when we get our use table done, which is. I think I talked about that maybe about six months ago, but we're getting pretty close on that, we just met the other day. And so we'll start to see that come forward and that'll be a big, big project to review, so.
And just so far, I may understand this whole picture, does lighting fall into this at all or does that fall into another order, another category?
Uh, it's another section, so it's, it's in, within the same chapter, but that's our municipal lighting requirements that are in that, so.
Okay, so is that kinda it on parking standards for today? And, I mean, on that, and so Mike, do you want to update us on the budget request?
Yeah, I, I think.
$1,500, I think is what it was.
Yeah, I just included, I think at the end of your packet, I've got through the request and it was just based upon what we've done for the last few years. And, and it's just $1,500 for training opportunities, subscriptions to publications. Although we don't have the Planning Commissioners Journal anymore since that is out of print now, so I don't know that we, we subscribe to.
How did we use it this last year?
Well, we had sent some members to the Heritage Conference.
A couple of people went to Heritage Conference, that's what I was thinking.
Went to Heritage Conference, so that, that was a good thing.
Yeah.
But, you know, usually it's maybe gift cards for departing members or, you know, things of that nature. And then if there's a training opportunity, we usually use it with that, but I don't know that we've come close to the 1,500 the last few years.
Yeah, I was just going to follow up by saying if people think of good continuing at or external, you know, educational opportunities to bring them up and we can, you know, see what.
Yeah, if there's something that maybe would be beneficial and.
Sometimes AP, I don't know, APA, are they expensive? Well, there's one up at Priest Lake, that's more the inland chapter that, in May.
Yeah.
That one's really right around the corner, but, but there must be other, you know, conferences like that that are sort of more local planning, northwest kind of thing.
Do you think of any good speaker to come here?
Yeah, that's an idea.
Because that seems, to me, that seems more costly.
Yeah, it gets, it gets, which is a bitter, a bigger audience, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, yeah, or the conferences, the Idaho APA conference is gonna be down in Boise this year. And they're usually hover around 200 to 300 dollars for registration.
And Smart Growth is usually in Boise, right? That's the inland chapter of something, something, yeah.
Yeah, the inland chapter of Washington, the inland empire chapter of the Washington chap, Washington American Planning Association. But they have their conference in Priest Lake every year, so go figure.
I've been a speaker there for a couple of times, so I've been there for that, from that end, but not for.
If anybody's interested in that, it's a relatively inexpensive conference, I think it's only around 200 dollars and you get food and.
Everything, yeah, it's, it's pretty reasonable.
It's right there on Priest Lake and so we usually go, at least one member from our department usually goes there every year. And it's, you hear really good speakers because they usually come from the west side and, you know, but, but have a rural mix to it as well, so they're, they're usually pretty good.
There may be others. Okay, so that, is there anything else on the budget that you wanted to say?
Uh, maybe vote to approve.
I moved that we request the Sabanadas last year.
Oh, okay, so is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Sentions?
Thanks for doing all of that.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that was a lot of work.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. All right, so we have the shared readings discussion thing out, I gotta dig it out of wherever, on, on off-street parking. And there's one that I read that was online that I didn't print out and I read it in time for the last meeting and I've completely forgotten what it's about. But we have the, the dynamics of off-street parking and parking design and, you know, I don't know if we could start, I suppose, with one or the other, the parking design? Are, are there questions that people had or, or any insights and?
I thought the parking design was, was good, kind of, they have the possible strategies at the very end and have a bullet list.
Yeah.
You look, you know, if you go through those, obviously it's not a one-size-fits-all for every municipality. But we do a lot of the, the ones that are recommended there.
You're talking about in the, the strategies at the end, yeah.
Yeah, the kind of bullet points of the possible strategies at the end. Or, you know, there's some, definitely some things to look at, they talked about revising stall dimensions, reduce minimum parking requirement.
Yeah, that seemed to be a big theme was, you know, that, I think Portland was one of the first cities that started to actually have a maximum. Rather than, you know, introducing the concept of not permitting more than X number of parking spaces. Because there was a trend in businesses to want to just show that they had a lot of available parking so that, and, you know, what does that do to the, the urban environment when you do that?
They park it to the maximum Black Friday, you know.
Right, right, the hundred-year sale.
150% of it, but, yeah, we, we've done that in Legacy Crossing, it's about the only zone or area we've done, done that in town where we've had a parking maximum.
Well, the other thing that, you know, interests me is the low-impact development techniques of the whole. You know, I was thinking about this really with the Orchard Avenue development we had a few weeks ago in a public hearing. Where they're, you know, gonna just take all the, the site water through the site in a, in a, you know, basically a culvert. And, and, you know, if we had the ability to start to engineer things using natural bioswales and landscaping so that that creek could have not had to be channeled underground, for example. It becomes a community asset in a way, becomes a wildlife habitat, some people were here kind of worried about that. And, and this whole section on low-impact development techniques, of course, it's applying to parking lots, but it's sort of that same idea of using natural, integrating, you know, constructed natural systems to mitigate what normally is taken care of by engineering and, and just burdens the system. So I like the, I like that whole section, I thought it was interesting.
Otherwise, would you like, spend all that money that covered up Hog Creek going through the.
And sending the problem on downstream, yeah, really.
And then we spend all the money to uncover.
Yeah, yeah, right, oh, true, yeah, good point, yeah. And just the fact that they say the effective use of LID techniques can significantly reduce the cost of providing stormwater management by eliminating the use of the infrastructure. by eliminating the use of the infrastructure of ponds, pipes, curbs, gutters and roadway paving, you know, so having, you know, moving more towards absorbing on-site. To me, it seems like something we need to work at.
Does a, a water effect have to be before we decide that we're going to use it and, and, you know, rather than just covering it up? I mean, Palouse, the creek comes through town where we seem to be struggling to use that in some effective way. We only have recently done that. We have, certainly didn't do it, I mean, there's, and all the people that live out there in mountain viewish world have no idea what to do about the creek. Their, their property just runs to the center line of the creek and so there is no policy that we had, you know, it's just there. And then, then it gets too late. I don't know about Hog Creek. It, I don't know, should, do you think that we should have built around the Hog Creek? Is that pretty clear to everybody, do you think? And then with that little swale that you're talking about on the project that we had out there, I mean, is that, that isn't a creek, that's just a
It's just a wet area, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, it just, I, you know, the council has indicated that for like Hog Creek, they'd want to see, you know, portions of that daylighted. That's why the new projects along Mountain, you know, Polk Street, you see the creek that's daylighted. So, like Britton Lane and the apartment complex to the south, they've actually required it to be relocated about ten feet to the east to make way for the curbing tree lawn and then sidewalk and then the creek over there to the east and then Billy Nottington Park, the one next to Victoria, Almond Asbury, that, they daylighted a portion of that as well.
Hog Creek came to that, to that, to that.
Yeah, it goes along the south, south edge of it.
Yeah, that's what they meant, you know, in one generation, we cover things over and run them through culverts and pipes and then two, three generations later, oh, let's open that. That's a lot of money in and out and in and out and
Well, the
That should be more forward-thinking.
Lanny Lane where the proposals to cover it up and put it in a culvert
Right, and that was bothering me.
Is a continuation of the subdivision that I'm in immediately downstream where it's
Covered up.
Where it's currently covered up in a culvert for, for a distance about two to three times as long as what the Lanny Lane subdivision is.
But people
And then, then immediately below that, it, it still comes out into daylight.
Yeah. And then same with Blackwood, you know, if you notice that on Solonaker and the other extension of Lanny, you see that drainage comes down and then we have it culverted, the same, what, you know, the same scenario that Peekaboo is proposing where you have it culverted and it goes into a stormwater detention pond right there at the southwest corner. So, I, you know, those are just seasonal water bodies that, it's just a product of the topography of our region. You always have, you know, low
Dry, sort of dry creeks, yeah.
And you go on any drive on any road and you'll see almost little streams
Right.
Down in the low-lying areas and most of the areas that you drive through, so.
But in the case of parking lots, it's, you know, generated by the pavement that otherwise would have been absorbed, you know, and by the ground and so
Yeah.
I guess moving towards encouraging that low-impact development type of approach on the parking lots.
Yeah.
I found interesting in this article.
And then that's, you know, something we're talking about is, well, we already allow now, but it'd be nice to reinforce, you know, permeable pavers and some other
Has anybody come up with any of that thing in that technology that can hold up to snow plowing in the winter?
Maybe the chow.
That's the trouble.
Closest I can think of, and I don't know how permeable they are, but they're somewhat permeable, is, Nell's helped me, what's the street that goes through campus perpendicular to Line Street that's got pavers and they just redid them a few years ago?
University.
They're, they're set in sand, they're not
University.
Yeah, university, thank you. So, they're set in sand and the snowplow, and, and they're really pretty low maintenance because I, I was talking to somebody who maintains them one day and they just said, "Well, we just, you know, after snow plowing season, sometimes we have to just roll them back down a little bit." But, they're, they're just set, instead of set in concrete or whatever, I mean, you know, it's, or asphalt, it's, it's just pavers that are in sand. So, it's permeable between the, sort of at the mortar, where the mortar
Those are essentially the same pavers as, as in my, my driveway.
And how do they work?
Set in sand.
Yeah.
They, my snow blower does occasionally catch them when I'm running around there if I, you know, letting the lip down, be down close. But, I would say, I spent a lot of time when I installed them, contouring them to channel the water in the way I wanted it to go. And every time we have a rainstorm, I go over there and take a look to see whether the water is actually running off. And I have never yet actually seen water run off of it.
So, they are absorbing.
It soaks in, between the cracks.
So, it would be sort of in-between permeable and, I mean, it's, it's a light
It's just a No, just concrete pavers. Pavers in Europe that they used for that hundreds of years, the thing that makes it successful is to have a base of gravel that is really solid. In other words, you, you can't just put it on dirt. You've got to put gravel and then sand and then you level these things out and boy, they really work. At least, I've never seen any issue
I would think level would be the critical thing.
On university, up by the campus.
Slip?
Yeah.
That was not
I'll bring you a book. I just bought a book on infrastructure about this, of everything that you were just saying about in Europe. And the guy just, it's just come out comparing all the, the way the pavers were done and the history of road beds and all that kind of stuff. It's really cool.
It's neat.
It's surprising.
Because I know that's been, from, coming from the contractors, well, that's what they, that was their objection. Well, it will never work because
Well, the university proves that wrong every day, every winter by running snow plows right over those pavers.
I think that's
And, and occasionally they have to reset them, you know, but it's not, you know, and then after, I think only once in the, almost thirty years I was there, they, they did a big project of replacing them because they were putting in infrastructure underneath.
That's because they had to put a new, they put a new line in.
Right, right.
Those ones from, actually goes from Line Street down to Rayburn, that whole block is snowplowed on and it's, it seems to work well. The only reason we don't have more miles of that on campuses, it's relatively expensive to install.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so you have to take up the paving and what have you, but it does work well and it certainly is a better thing than asphalt.
So, I like the idea where they suggested having it maybe not in the travel lanes as much as in the parking stuff, where you're not really putting a lot of heavy traffic, fast-moving, faster moving stuff on it, you're just setting cars on it. So, it's, and it kind of
You're barely moving as you're in there.
Right, and it's giving a differentiation, breaking up the asphalt seat and the darkness of the blackness of it absorbs heat too. So, just going for a lighter pavement. So, I thought that was kind of cool. You know, I don't know what struck other people, but that was one of the things that did. And then, Nell, you always bring up parking garages and they kind of address the, where the threshold is. I mean, well, they didn't really give us hard numbers of how you would figure out, when is it economical, or when does it start to pay off with the cost of land versus the cost of constructing a parking garage? Where's that threshold? And so, you know, and they talk about that, but they don't really give you specifics.
My view is, it is never economically feasible to build those parking, kinds of parking structures, but some, it just like the train system or the bus system, no transportation system makes money. I just, I, I was shocked when I lived in Europe for six years and thought I would hear that these beautiful transportation systems in Europe, and every one of them loses money. You build the transportation system just to make the system work. You, the government has to do it. And they used to, they, they would give reports and Switzerland was the only country that came close to making its transportation, mass transit. It almost broke even, but most of the, you know, because you just don't have, you don't use the thing twenty-four hours a day. And so, one of the things that I've always felt is that we were willing to spend millions of dollars in building a road to get somewhere, but we're not willing to spend money to put the car someplace when it gets to where it's going.
You know, when I was in Amsterdam a couple of years ago, I mean, I think it gets, I think it's tied into the value of land and I think, I would argue with you that it becomes more economical in New York City or in San Francisco
Of course.
Or where, I mean, not in Moscow, Idaho probably, but in those places because surface lots are ridiculously unaffordable because you're not getting enough income out of them. But, when I was in Amsterdam, it was the first time I ever saw one of those. It was for a new housing development out on one of the main canals and I saw this car drive up, I saw this guy get out and all of a sudden his car disappears down underground. It's all computerized. I mean, you know, and then the computer takes the car and puts it somewhere and then you
Seriously?
I don't know how you retrieve it. And they talk a little bit about it here, but it's amazing. I mean, it's, there's no human intervention over the certain, so you don't have to go in a dark, creepy parking garage. Your car goes there and who knows what happens to it. It's because they can just stack them all on top of each other practically. I mean, I've seen the ones in New York where you drive on an elevator and it goes up and then
How do you get your own car out on one?
Well, it's all computer-controlled and, you know, you punch in probably your, some code number. I guess you have a unit, you know, it was at a housing development, so, you know, they're probably, and, and then the car magically appears. And so, it's like a little
Sounds very space-age.
It's, it's pretty impressive.
What town was that?
That was in Amsterdam.
Amsterdam.
Yeah, and I was on a tour with Urban Morphologist, you know.
Cool.
Sure, well, we, we know that it, it makes more sense when you're paying up three, four, five hundred dollars a month to park your car. You can afford something different than
But how do they get an underground parking garage in the Netherlands? That's, that was my big question too.
They have pumps.
You know, we worry about water in Boise. They, the underground garages are a problem in Boise because of what you were talking about. And, and so how do they, yeah, I guess they pump.
But you notice now that, that, that was an argument thirty years ago in Boise, oh, Sand Creek's coming through and we can't go underground. Well, in jump, you know, they've gone down both, both under the bank and under, Simplot's new thing, they're down there forty feet with two levels of parking underground and you just put in a pump and pump the water to some
But when real estate gets expensive enough, then even wasting land by accommodating ramps and all the, the extra mileage you happen to put in a parking garage becomes less feasible than just doing this thing I was talking about. So, I think it all gets down to economics and I don't, I mean, the problem is, when are we going to get there here? It's, I think you're right, it would have to be a public, good kind of project. I mean, you know, because it, it would be so expensive to construct compared to a surface lot that it's hard to convince anybody they need to build one.
And we're running out of sand for making concrete.
Or a lot, too, so.
Well, we don't have, uh, sand around here, do we?
No, but they're mining entire islands and been displacing people in the South Pacific just to get their sand. And so, concrete is not a sustainable
And ocean sand has got too much salt in it. It's, you know, it starts to degenerate the rebar and everything else in concrete, so it's not, that's what you want, river sand if you can use it. So, I don't know. Anybody else have anything that inspired them in these areas?
Do you think we have any, what, what parking problem do we have in Moscow from your point of view, Mike, from, from working with it day in and day out?
The co-op parking lot's too small.
The what?
The co-op parking lot's too small.
I can tell you where you're going to have a
Get more people to bicycle and walk.
I think.
We're going to?
I think when Myalena gets opened up down there, there's going to be a, there's going to be an influx of a lot of cars and it's already
You mean Sagrera? You mean Sagrera? Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I was just wondering.
I think that you can feel, even though we haven't grown a lot, you can feel the difference. I think, I just, I, I'm walking more now than I, than I used to, but as I ran downtown to do something today, I mean, you are, only rarely can park close to where you want to be. You're gonna have to park a couple of blocks away right now. It's pretty, I'm, I'm just, I'm sort of thrilled by the energy of downtown and the fact that it doesn't seem to matter whether it's ten in the morning or six at night as you drive through town. There aren't many spaces.
When are we gonna get, one thing that would solve the problem if, if we had more turnover, if we went to two-hour limit. Why can't we go to a two-hour limit? I know some businesses like to have their employees park, you know.
A lot of, all the businesses have their employees parked there and move their cars and
Yeah, and, and I've been in meetings where about parking, like fifteen years ago, where all of a sudden everybody had to get up and go and move their car, you know, and, and so then people complain about the lack of vi- business viability downtown. Well, if their customers can't park there because employees are storing their cars in the downtown. You know, I think the problem would be solved by limiting parking between at least nine and five to two hours. Or, putting in meters. I don't know, meters are kind of unfriendly, I know, but
Well, we have a
Probably true.
Obviously.
I, I can't imagine that we can't, won't be forced in the next decade to have a couple little parking structures. You know, maybe it's only a forty-car structure, but I believe that in order for Boise to even come close to surviving, the CCDC had to go into the business of parking because you could not ask people to come downtown when they could go to the mall. And so you had to, they were always counting at the mall and saying, "Well, how many spaces do we have downtown?" And they built seven or eight, you know, two-hundred-car lots, parking structures, and the city had to subsidize those. There was no way they were going to
Well, on the good side, it means that there's more pressure on downtown because people are frequenting it more, so that's why it's harder to find a parking space. I mean, I think it's, a lot of it is all these restaurants have opened and, you know, in North Main, that used to be pretty quiet and you could always find a parking space. Now, there's three or four restaurants and
So, we, we resorted to a little secret ways. When we go to Lodge Bowl, where are you gonna park? It's
Park in the neighborhood and walk.
Isn't, hasn't anybody else ever thought about this? Will drive to a mall and park forty acres away from the building?
I know it, right?
And no one says a word. They just walk through the parking lot.
It's certainty. It's because
But don't want to park two blocks away from where you're going downtown. It's the weirdest thing.
Well, I've thought about that for years when, working with communities where people want to be able to park right in front of the business they're going to, but they can't do that at the mall. And it's, I think it's more a matter of certainty that you don't have to circle the block, you don't have, you know, you know, in this parking lot somewhere, there's a space for you, whereas downtown, you might not, you know, have to go a few
You don't think it's because people mind walking is that this, there's no certainty of where they will find?
That's what I decided it is because I agree with you. If you put a pedometer on people parking in the mall, how far they walked, their business is going to
It's a lot more fun to walk three blocks downtown than it is to walk three blocks in the mall.
Totally agree.
You know, I, I mean, I, I went to co-op today and I didn't even think You know, I mean, I went to a co-op today and I didn't even think about the co-op lot. I mean, I just went downtown and I, fine, I was two and a half blocks away and I only had one little purchase, but I think you just have to decide. That's, that's not, that's not an issue. But you're liable to actually see something interesting or meet a friend, which is, is a good thing. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I do think that we're, we've got the parking on Jackson, but we need, I think we need parking on the high school side as well. And I, you know, I've always had this big dream that we would make a decision to have a downtown high school and make a parking lot in front of the high school on, where that land comes up by out the people and put a, put a hundred and fifty-car parking lot with a park on top of it for the high school. And then at night, in the daytime, it would be pretty much full with people from the high school. But at nighttime, at three o'clock when everybody blasts out of there, now nighttime restaurant people could now have access and that would be a mixed use. It could be really exciting.
Well, we kinda have a shared parking system informally with the high school kids and the people in the neighborhood because, you know, when they're off at work or whatever, the kids come in and they park all in. And so, it demonstrates the capacity of the streets to absorb. I mean, I like the discussion about on-street parking serving a lot of the, quite a bit of the parking requirement rather than just putting all the burden on. I didn't realize that parking lots were sort of post-World War II idea, that they weren't even around before that much, you know, so. But I guess that makes sense, everybody parked on the street.
And the number of cars increased.
Oh, yeah, and they've increased in this town.
The people who come to your place, is there ever any comment about they couldn't find a place to park? I mean, no one can park in front of your...
Dennis, where's your business located?
I think the one he's talking about is downtown here on Sixth Street. Well, there's, I have zero parking in mine, right behind One World.
Oh, okay.
And so, but no, they usually, you usually find a spot in the back, back there, if you circle around, you know, somebody will...
In the parking lot.
Yeah. Or, you know, at nighttime, they'll park across the street at the bank when they close and they'll walk across the street. So, there's, I mean, so far, it's working, but I'm just, you know, looking down the road, I guess. I see it getting busier.
Sure. No, I think, I think it will. And I can just feel it over, I guess I haven't been here as long as you have, have I? When did you come to Moscow?
Seventy.
Seventy. See, I came nine years later. I didn't come till seventy-nine.
I'd be two here.
So, you can, but you certainly can feel the intensity of the town. And we may not be growing in dramatic steps, but you know...
The number of cars is proportional for sure.
And that the town is vit, pretty vital. It's pretty, I've just, as I've driven around the state with our archipelago project, it's given me a chance to see towns. And of course, Boise's undoubtedly the worst, but there's a lot of parking structures in Boise. And if you're willing to drive up to the fourth floor...
Well, I think we also are Pullman's downtown. I mean, you certainly see it on Mom's Weekend with, you know, or whatever. I mean, this town was hopping with, you know, it's where WSU students bring their parents or, you know, come on the weekends because it's a nice town, but it's, so it's a good sign when there's not enough parking in some ways, but it means there's vibrancy anyway, as long as people aren't just storing their cars on the street, but that's, I don't know.
Yeah, I haven't had to deal with that, but I'm guessing that there's, it'd be really interesting to be able to just go through town at three different times of the day and find out how many people are parked in town that might have been able to park three blocks away and didn't, but, but because they came to work at seven-thirty, were able to take up the space. I don't know how many there are.
Well, they have to move their car at eleven.
I don't know about other businesses in town, but co-op...
Eleven's when it starts.
It's not that we can force people to not park near downtown, but it's, there's pressure on people like, no, you shouldn't do that. Customers need those spaces. So, it's a, it's a unenforceable, but I would think that anybody that has business downtown is gonna kind of pressure their employees, don't take up those spaces.
Well, yeah, I would just presume that no co-op employee parks in your little parking lot.
Oh, no. You cannot park in the lot. But on the city streets, where the people, their encouragement is there, is like, you know, if you have to drive to come to work, please go off that way or somewhere is off the main.
And so, that's, as, as the Sangria thing, the hospital thing, inch by inch, we're gonna, we'll, we'll get a parking structure here in not too long. It'll have to happen, I think.
Are you planning to design something beautiful?
Do which?
Are you going to design something beautiful?
You're just gonna put liner buildings around, right?
Well, that's why the beautiful one is the one under the high school, because the high school sits up fifteen feet or so above the street. And so, my thought of the beautiful one would be just to dig down, drop the parking down a couple of feet and build a pad and have a park on top of it. And that would be the place, because there's always been this, in the, in the last years, that's been the argument, that the high school has is what we need, some green space for PE. And I've laughed about that. Because, you know, there are, I think by the time you get in high school, and they've mitigated that a little bit by putting the ninth grade in high school, because junior high kids really do need to know, have that outdoor stuff. But by the time you get in high school, what we need to do is just build a really cool rec center for the high school where people would do all this, you know, weightlifting and aerobics and do all that stuff and have a parking lot under the park. And you could go out and...
And then you don't have to look at a monolithic...
Yeah. It'd just be a one-level parking under there. And I think you can get about a hundred and twenty cars in there, but...
Well, we've come around a few topics today. Does anybody have anything they wanna add, or should we go home? Go home. Anybody wanna tell us we should?
I'm struggling with a sort of a peripheral issue and I guess it, it, maybe Nels' parking lot might serve as a joint use to solve a problem that I'm addressing. In some moment of weakness, I agreed to be on a long-term facilities planning committee for the Unitarian Church, which is running out of room. And the, the issue is what one could actually do on that lot with some reconstruction, not of the, perhaps not of the church itself, but of the adjacent yellow house which we own. And parking, required parking becomes the, sort of the...
The critical issue. Well, you'd wish that you could have shared parking with the nineteen-twelve building.
Yeah, but the nineteen-twelve center doesn't have adequate parking for the proposed development of the upper floors, which is a problem. And I guess part of what I'm coming up to is the question of what parking requirements for uses like that imposed on some expansion of use due to the, to the viability of things like churches and other institutions downtown. The Unitarian Church might possibly have to relocate if it, and abandon those structures. You know, there's a hundred, basically two-hundred-year-old buildings, interesting architectural issues on the church, but...
Well, I, the only tangential issue to that or something, I, 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 I mean, it raises some interesting questions and I can think of something a little similar. When Saint Mary's Church, Saint Mary's School, excuse me, wanted to build a parking lot right in the center of Fort Russell, right in the center of the quietest street in Fort Russell practically, and, you know, and they were gonna go through that historic wall and bring cars right down, shining into people's houses coming out of there and then, you know, after an event. And the neighborhood really pushed to say, we would rather have the inconvenience every time there's an event in this gym of a few extra cars on the street than tolerating having a big parking lot inside an historic neighborhood. And you're inside an historic neighborhood there, so I would say the same argument if I lived near that church.
Yeah, sure.
I would rather see, I mean, it happens every time Saint Mary's Church has a funeral or a mass. There's cars all over the place. You can't even see through the intersection, but so what? That's part of community life.
Are you usually meeting at the same time as a Methodist at church as meeting?
As which?
Methodist. No, we're, we're, are you living by for the same spots?
The Methodists obviously have parking issues also. I guess they're almost totally parking on the street or anything.
Well, they're allowed by a conditional use, so what does that do to their parking requi, I mean, somehow, we were able to keep Saint Mary's from having to build this parking lot, which we felt was gonna be really destructive, you know?
Well, I think that they got some variances for that.
Yeah, and it went through, it didn't go through this body, it went through...
Board of Adjustments.
Board of Adjustments, yeah.
Yeah, it's, a expansion of use of a church function is, it does require a conditional use in a residential zone, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But I guess I'm, I'm interested in the question of whether it makes sense to apply the, sort of the same parking requirements to uses located in sort of historic districts.
Well, I would be champion for the historic district and say no. I mean, I can think of boarding houses, for example, that house a lot of students in our, in Fort Russell. And again, let them park on the street rather than creating parking lots in, out of their front lawns. I mean, you know, it just ruins the, it's one thing to have people living inside those buildings that aren't related or whatever, but it's another thing to have cars all over the foot in the site. I mean, you know, at least the building still seems like it's part of the neighborhood. So, I would argue against, I would, I mean, that would, I would feel pretty strongly from the Historic Preservation Commission point of view, I think as well, don't you think, Nels? I mean, that we would rather...
What is your growth issue? Are you getting more and more Unitarian people by the dozen?
We're, we're, we're pretty crowded on a Sunday morning.
Are you?
Yeah.
And...
Lots, lots of kids, adults with kids. But the, you know, I see the, you know, I happened onto the, the New Baptist Church out, out on Fairview. And how many acres of parking do they have there?
It's gotta be about five to seven.
It is, it is incredible.
So, like three city blocks?
And I guess my question is whether that was a calculation of required parking or whether they were resizing that for Easter Sunday morning or something.
I, yeah, that was before my time, but I remember looking back through the file and yeah, that was definitely over what the requirement is.
Yeah.
I mean, we've, we've, I think on the onset of this off-street parking amendment, we thought a little bit about those businesses on North Main Street that are in motor business that are developed in a, kind of the same fashion as Main Street. They're all built out to the property lines. They don't have any off-street parking. So, that becomes the challenge in that if they wanna have another use go in, I mean, we just ran into it with Rans and Raves. They're built out to all their property lines and just because the former use was coal again and didn't require a certain, you know, the way our code works is that we don't go back and require a use. So, if it's like the same use, there's a coffee shop and another coffee shop moves in, they don't have to do anything. But if something, a new use moves into that building that requires more parking than a coffee shop would have required, then they have to make up that difference.
Right.
And so, that's when it becomes tricky because now all of a sudden, you're putting a restaurant in and you had a building that was largely a warehouse use with a couple offices in it and you had a parking requirement. And now, you have to go out and get another seven, eight parking spaces from somewhere that you don't own. And it just so happened that the city owned that triangle piece right there when the couplet went in and, so they ended up working out a lease agreement with that for the off-street, or for the, you know, off-street parking. But it becomes a challenge because, yeah, on the North Main Street corridor, I remember when a press company, when a book company went in mid-block there, south of Moscow Medical and the old transmission shop, they had to create, they had to borrow parking or lease parking from Saint John's Implement Yard behind there to get their required parking on top of, you know, creating some additional parking in the front. And it was just, you know, a bit of a challenge for them. So, you know, we'd always thought about maybe looking at going through a conditional use permit in order to, you know, variance becomes tough because it's real hard to justify.
By hardship, yeah.
There's a higher level of justification that's needed in order to approve one. You know, you don't really, there should be variances approved very often. It's only special circumstances, but...
One of the effects basically is that there are various uses that can't be, can't accommodate an expansion of use downtown. And it's, it's part of what's pushing some enterprises out to the edge, like, you know, like the Baptists moved out of Fairview. And I suspect you wouldn't find the same with commercial enterprises. And I'm not sure, maybe that's the way it has to be, but we should be aware that that's happening.
Are you, how far do you have to walk from, when you come on Sunday, I take it, you meet on Sundays?
I regularly walk the two miles from home.
You do? Well, then, no problem.
No problem. No problem for me.
I, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking, I was...
I just, just don't want them to have to move out to the edge, so I have to walk five miles.
Well, I just look at Saint Mary's, you know, and they have multiple masses and I don't know how big their congregation is, but it's pretty sizable. And there's a lot of cars stacked around Saint Mary's on certain Friday, Saturday nights or whatever, you know? Would we rather see that than a huge parking lot that they take out a few historic houses to put, you know, a big off-street parking lot that gets used once or twice a week?
It's twenty-four hours a day that you have that use.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
It's very temporary.
Yeah. And predictable, for the most part.
I would look at the Saint Michael's Cathedral in Boise there is right on, I don't think they have two spots.
And you off-street, yeah, yeah, no.
And it's a big, and there's a Presbyterian church right across the street.
Yeah, we, didn't we park in a parking lot when we went in?
The parking lot, the people that have a parking lot is the Baptist, the Cathedral of the Rockies. They've actually taken out a couple of thousands.
So, we took somebody else's parking lot to go, okay? Because we wanted to see...
I thought we parked on the street.
Oh, yeah, I don't remember.
I suspect that that issue, because I can see that both the Presbyterians and the Methodists and the Unitarians are all basically sharing, you know, they bump into each other.
Yeah.
Actually, to directly answer your question, I doubt that anybody who actually, who drove to church, at the Unitarian Church, had to park more than a block and a half away.
So, I mean, I think one thing we should, institutional... So, I mean, I think one thing we should institutionalize is, yes, let's keep our church on Sunday.
Well, I think that also you're making an argument for maybe looking at historic districts differently than other areas, in terms of where it's really not desirable to start taking out historic buildings to create parking lots to accommodate expanded uses. I mean, that, that would be my take on it, I don't know.
Yeah, it could be that maybe we look at the change of use, you know, at the beginning of the off-street parking section, the change of use, or expansion of, additional expansion of use, and they're technically unfeasible, or, you know, something about the damage and the character of the neighborhood, you know, maybe you go through a conditional use permit.
Because we don't have district-specific zoning, you know, I mean, it's...
Maybe it could be detrimental to the neighborhood, or, you know, some few circumstances where you could go through a conditional use permit, public hearing, and instead of a variance, have it reviewed by the board as a conditional use permit to have the parking reduced, or waived, or...
The, the current, the, the table, the parking table requires one parking space per three chairs, or 60 inches, six feet of pew, or 40 square feet of assembly area, which...
Let's take out the McConnell mansion.
Well, yeah. Or alternatively, we could do like the Baptists, move out on the edge, and they could, they could tear down the, the church for 1912 center parking.
Yeah, I, I, my solution to the 1912 center is to keep the high school in downtown and, and rent half of the building back to the high school as it grows, and, and so that it continues to just be part of the high school.
Put a bridge across Third Street.
Oh, the students seem to be able to get across just, there's crosswalks there, they're, they're, they're smart enough to get across the street.
I don't think it's a genetic issue, because we're not, we're not going to increase it, traffic on Third Street, are we? Mr. Transportation.
Well, we better adjourn this meeting before we get into too many other commissions. Okay, thanks. Yeah. Oh, that's okay, we had just, we had just started, we were...
...discussion on transportation, it was just a stay on parking?
Um, well, Joel was saying that they meet tomorrow, so that was the main, we're talking about transportation.
Yeah, I was thinking that.
And that they had been talking about bicycle, um...
Wayfinding signage.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, yeah.
I should talk to Joel, I have this idea, I talked to, I mentioned it to Mary, I made, I didn't bring the article, but there was this really great article in the Tribune about...